I completely skipped over the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Secretary, thank you for calling roll. But at this time, I will ask Commissioner Garrido, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir. Just please mute yourselves and repeat after me placing your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Garrido. At this time, we're going to move on to public communications. Madam Secretary, have you received any communications regarding anything that is not regarding any of our matters? Our public hearing?
None at this time.
Mr. Chairman, have you done roll call?
Yes, we called roll right before the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to move on to consent calendar action minutes from June 10th, 2020. Do we have a motion to approve?
I motion to approve Commissioner Flores.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Commissioner Garrido?
Great, thank you very much. Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Chair Christopher Sign?
Yes.
Vice Chair Edwin Borkas?
Yes.
Commissioner Edith Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Christopher Garrido? And Commissioner Christopher Garrido?
Yes.
And Commissioner Marlin Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Action minutes from June 10th, 2020 have been adopted 5-0. At this time, we're going to move on to set matters, public hearing. Item number two, a request for consideration of the following. A design to facilitate the construction of a new 60-foot-tall monopole wireless communication facility in the IC industrial commercial zone pursuant to table 153.180.050. Applicant J5 Infrastructure Partners, case number CP885. Mr. Ron Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Associate Planner Melissa Chipris will be doing the presentation.
Hello, good evening, Honorable Chair and members of the Commission.
Okay, so let me give this by.
Before you is conditional use permit CP885 to approve a design to facilitate the construction of a new 60-foot-tall monopole wireless telecommunications facility in the industrial commercial zone. Next slide, please. The proposed project site is located south of Baldwin Park Boulevard and east of Main Avenue. The subject site's zoning industrial commercial designation is consistent with the city's general planned land use section. This site also has industrial commercial zone properties to the northeast, south, and west. The subject site is approximately 51,020 square feet in area and is equipped with two commercial buildings with an approximate combined building area of 23,532 square feet. Each building possesses multiple units that allow for a number of commercial uses. Next slide, please. Applicant J5 Infrastructure for AT&amp;T is proposing a 60-foot-high monopole and in an approximate 372-square-foot equipment enclosure. The proposed monopole structure will be located on the westerly portion of Building 1 and will be approximately 46 feet away from the public right-of-way. The installation of the monopole will not require any demolition of existing structures. And due to the subject property maintaining two commercial buildings, the proposed cell tower and equipment enclosure has been designed in a way that it will complement the existing structures and not affect the daily operation of any tenants of the commercial center. Next slide, please. The antenna plan to the left of this slide indicates that the proposed wireless facility will consist of a total of 12 8-foot panel antennas distributed at four antennas per four sectors. 36 RRUs and two microwave antennas will be installed on the tower. While the area plan to the right of the slide indicates the proposed equipment enclosure will screen a telco cabinet, fiber cabinet, a GPS antenna, an automatic transfer switch, electrical meter, AC panel cabinet, an Emerson power cabinet, a coax cable tray, four PureCell cabinets, and a gene rack generator. Next slide, please. In order for the proposed telecommunications tower to complement the existing structures, staff has conditioned the applicant to utilize high-quality fronds, run all wiring inside the tower's trunk, and have the equipment enclosure be made of decorative split face block that is to be painted in ash color to match the existing buildings. Next slide, please. In addition, landscaping will be installed along the equipment enclosure to soften the appearance of the enclosure. The applicant will also be conditioned to maintain and provide irrigation to the proposed mind landscaping all along the equipment enclosure. Next slide, please. The photographic simulations provided provide an indication as to how the proposed cell tower will be incorporated with the surrounding area. As part of the conditional use permit application, the applicant was required to provide an alternative site analysis that identifies other suitable sites and co-location options with the goal of avoiding the construction of new towers. Attachment number two of your agenda packets includes this alternative site analysis where the applicant indicated that the subject site was identified as the most suitable for the proposed telecommunications facility. In regard to this proposal, staff believes that the spirit and intent of the wireless ordinance has been met. With the added conditions of approval, the visual impacts created by the wireless facility will be reduced. The proposed project will not have any adverse impact on the public or the environment as it will provide a utility where coverage is lacking. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission approve Resolution PC 20-16 approving CP 885. Thank you, and the applicant is present for any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. At this time, does the Commission have any questions of staff? Great. At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Madam Secretary, have we received any communication in regards to this proposal?
Chair, we have one comment submitted in writing from Dina Elzik E-L-Z-I-K in opposition to the cell tower. And she indicates that she wishes to vote against the erection of the cell phone.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Robert.
Can we confirm that there have been no public communications in favor?
Sure. So, Madam Secretary, can you confirm that we haven't received any communications in favor of the proposal?
I have received no communications in favor of the proposal.
Noted. Thank you very much. And you mentioned that was the only communication that we received?
The only communication received in writing, sir.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. At this time, Commissioners, any questions of staff or of the applicant? Seeing no questions. Do we have a motion to adopt the findings of fact and Resolution PC 20-16 entitled to resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park approving a conditional use permit to facilitate the construction of a new 60-foot-tall monopole wireless telecommunications facility in the IC industrial commercial zone pursuant to table 153.180.050. Address 1352 Main Avenue. Applicant J5 Infrastructure for AT&amp;T, case number CP 885.
Commissioner Borkas motion to approve the resolution.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Borkas. Do we have a second?
It's Commissioner Garcia that I will second it.
Great. Thank you very much. Motion by Commissioner Borkas, second by Commissioner Garcia. Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Chair.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes.
Vice Chair Edwin Borkas?
Yes.
Commissioner Edith Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Christopher Garrido?
Yes.
And Commissioner Marlin Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Findings of fact and the resolution have been adopted 5-0. So at this time, we're going to move on to matter number three. A request for consideration of recycling facility within the industrial commercial IC zone pursuant to table 153.050.020 in the city's municipal code. Location 4242 Park Place, APN 8437-018-045. Applicant Wilmer Hernandez Gonzalez, case number CP 20-09. Mr. Ron Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. As indicated, this represents before you consideration of a recycling facility within the industrial commercial zone pursuant to the municipal code. If you could go to the next slide more, David. Subject site is own industrial commercial and consistent with the commercial industrial general plan land use designation. Vehicular access is provided via Ramona Boulevard through Park Place. The subject property. I'm sorry. If you can go to the next slide, David. Perfect. The subject property has a lot area of 3,000 square feet. The property is currently vacant. The proposal is to establish a recycling facility by placing one mobile collection container within the site. The proposal includes the installation of two customer parking spaces. The surrounding zoning, just to go over the surrounding zoning, is to the north, you have the city of Irwindale, which consists of industrial buildings on all four sides. So to the north, the west, and the east, you have a collection of industrial uses and within that industrial zoning. Pursuant to the municipal code, no more than one recycling facility can be permitted within a 3,000-foot radius and requires Planning Commission approval. The applicant has submitted a certified radius map to verify that the full recycling facility meets that requirement. And they have provided that, and we have confirmed. The use will include 160-square-foot mobile metal collection container, which will be placed on the property. They will consist of two employees during the operating hours of 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Sunday. The materials will be collected are aluminum cans, glass, and plastic bottles. As you can see in the rendering, a rendering of the site plan with the two customer parking spaces and the mobile recycling container. If you can go on to the next slide. David. During the 10-day review period, staff received today a letter of concern that was also shared with the Planning Commission for your review and to be included in the record. So the letter of concern consists of six comments. And I will have the city attorney go over this briefly.
Yes, Mr. Garcia? Garcia?
Yes.
I think that we should do that during the public hearing portion of the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, correct. I'm sorry for that, Robert. I just want to let the Commission know that during the public review period, we did receive a letter of concern and will address that during the public comment. But that concludes staff's presentation. And staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the resolution approving conditional use permit 20-09. The applicant is present for further questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Ron. So at this time, do the Commissioners have any questions of staff? Great. If there's no questions, at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Madam Secretary, have we received any communication in regards in support of this project?
None has been received.
Noted. Thank you very much. At this time, have we received any communication opposed to the project?
None at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Robert.
I believe we have received something in opposition to this particular project. I do have an email. Mrs. Washington may not have it, but it was definitely sent to me. And so we do have at least one in opposition.
Thank you, Robert. Yeah, I did receive that by email before the meeting. Should we have somebody read it for the record?
Yes, I would like to read it for the record.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received today, July 22nd, 2020, at approximately 10:30 a.m. a public communication from a Mr. Greg Tuttle. The public communication subject says planning meeting number CP 20-09. The substantive part of his communication is as follows. To whom it concerns, planning commissioners and Ron Garcia. One, this man has operated illegally for almost a year behind the barber shop, and I had filed numerous complaints in code enforcement, which finally was removed from there, which finally he was removed from there. The resin trash and not containing the recyclables, all doing it illegally. Number two, the lot he wants to use is next to Action Village that has several businesses there that don't want the rodents and rats. This will bring along with the residents who will live close by. Number three, this man has already proven he will not be a clean recycling center from past code enforcements, and we do not want it next to our businesses. Number four, I strongly object to Marlin Garcia voting on the project since the property owner, William Salazar, has given her thousands of dollars during her past council races. Garcia must abstain from voting. Number five, I want to see the conditional use permit that will be issued also. Number six, we have all the businesses in total agreement that this should not be placed near our businesses. And we know that the election's coming soon. All this can be removed anyway. Please don't waste city time on a project the owner has already proven will not abide by regulations. Thank you, Greg S. Tuttle. That concludes the public communication. There were some things raised here that I would like to address to the Commission if it pleases the Chair. Chairman?
I'm so sorry. I was muted. Robert, of course, we'd like to talk about this letter. Should we close the public hearing before discussing the letter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the public hearing may be closed.
Great. So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And at this time, Robert, if you wouldn't mind addressing some of the claims made in the letter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I did receive this email, I did call Mr. Garcia to look into some of these allegations as it relates to number one about operating illegally. It's my understanding that this individual was operating. Did not understand at that point in time that he could not operate because it had, for whatever reason, he was told that he could not operate until he was approved. And he did stop operating, and it's my understanding that that has never occurred again. Number two, the lot next to the Action Village, several businesses that don't want the rodents and rats. We have not received any other communication from any other business other than Mr. Tuttle, this individual. The number three talks about recycling and so forth, the same thing as number one. Number four, he makes a claim that Marlin Garcia, Commissioner Marlin Garcia, is somehow conflicted based on receiving allegedly donations in her past council races. There is a First Amendment right for everyone to make campaign contributions. There's also a First Amendment right for politicians or former council members such as former council member Garcia to seek campaign contributions. So campaign contributions cannot serve as the basis of a legal conflict. Commissioner Garcia does not have a legal conflict, and Commissioner Garcia may vote on this item. Number five, I want to see the conditional use permit that will also be issued. That, of course, the Planning Commission can take care of that. And then lastly, regarding the rodents and the other things that are mentioning there, I also understand from Mr. Garcia that in January, there was a complaint made by Mr. Tuttle about rodents and other things that he has mentioned here. That in code enforcement went out and inspected in January. There was no operation going. There was no rodents, and there were no violations of any kind. That's all that I know about the allegations that are here. Unless Mr. Garcia has any additional information, that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, Robert. Mr. Ron Garcia, if there's anything you'd like to add?
Yes, just thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I also just want to add that in the conditional use permit, and based on the proposed use, we have listed a number of conditions to help mitigate any potential impacts, negative impacts in the operation of this facility. Based on my years' experience in dealing with these types of uses, I think we tightened up within the resolution and the conditional use permit, such things as making sure that their hours are limited and that requiring any material to be stored in a container, that it has to be clean and also secure, and also prohibiting the release of fluids within the parking lot or within and around the area. And also, the facility needs to be maintained free of any vermin litter or any other undesirable materials. And lastly, the site shall be swept at the end of each collection day and cleaned weekly. So I just wanted to summarize and indicate the conditions of approval that have been identified for the operation of the facility.
And one final comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Robert.
That is important to note that Mr. Garcia has required additional safeguards that are not normally attached to business such as this. For example, he wanted to stay open till 5:00 p.m. and because of potential noise issues or something of that nature, Ron reduced that to 4:00 p.m. and a number of other items that the requister had wanted that Ron either reduced or added additional obligations upon him for this particular facility.
Thank you very much, Robert. So at this time, do the Commissioners have any questions or need any clarification from either Robert, from Ron, or the applicant?
Hi, this is Edith, Commissioner Flores. I have a question for staff. Is this too close? Because I see on the map, I'm looking at my map over here of the city, and there's a restaurant close by Malita's Restaurant, I believe. I don't know how that would affect a recycling center, affect a restaurant around there.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. The restaurant is adjacent to Ramona Boulevard?
Yes, it's right around.
David, if you can pull up the presentation real quick, so I would just give you give a perspective. Should be a couple. It's slide 12, David. That helps. Okay. As you can see, there's a green dot. So that's the location of the recycling facility. So it's essentially within the center, and it's hugged on all four sides by industrial uses. So it's not close to any restaurants. It wouldn't affect any operation of any businesses along Ramona Boulevard. So staff doesn't see any potential negative impacts from any of those businesses, including restaurants, from operating.
Okay, thank you. And one more question. How far is the other, is there another recycling center nearby?
No, within the 300-foot radius that was done, there are no other recycling facilities within that 3,000-foot radius.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Commissioner Marlin Garcia.
Yes.
Okay. Hi. I just want to make it very clear that I, Marlin Garcia, must and will vote on this item. Despite being retired from city council for a handful of years, I still remember the rules, which I never violated during my tenure as a councilwoman, and will not commence now as a Commissioner. So I want to thank the attorney for clarifying that. And I just, my questions were, and they were answered. The applicant has met all of the requirements that we've imposed on him as a city and has also agreed to some of our requests to ensure that he meets, for instance, the noise abatement, not operating after 4 o'clock. And yeah, and the restaurant situation, that restaurant is down in the corner, I believe, on Ramona. And auction, is it? Or anyways, yeah, Edith, it's kind of far away from the recycling facility. So that was my concern, that they need all of our requirements, that they abide by what we requested, and it appears that they are. So I'm okay with this.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any additional Commissioners with any questions or concerns?
Chairman Sign?
Commissioner Borkas, go ahead.
Ron, it was said that he had been operating in Baldwin Park already. Where was he operating, and how long has he been operating in Baldwin Park?
Good question, Commissioner Borkas. So if you remember, the applicant before you was before you, before the Commission, about sometime last year. So this is the same applicant that was before you for the site behind the barber shop. If you guys remember, that is about a block, I would say, down the street close to the new housing development?
Yeah.
Yeah. So he was operating there. And as Mr. City Attorney had mentioned, a notice of violation was sent to him back in March of 2019. And so that's how he essentially got to present before you for his conditional use permit. And so that CUP went before you in May. And so that CUP went before you in May, shortly right after submitting. And in April, that went to the planning commission for your consideration. I know there was some, if you remember, there were some concerns that were brought up with the operation of that facility. But that is where the applicant was operating, is no longer there and has not operated there since receiving denial from the commission for that location.
Thank you, Ron.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
My understanding was, he thought that once he submitted his first application, which was ultimately denied, but he believed that once he submitted his application, he could operate until he was approved. Once he was told that was not the rules, then of course he stopped operation.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Ron? Yes. Commissioner Garrido here. My only question is, and I know Robert went over this about Mr. Tuttle's concerns that he put out. I was just, you know, he did put out about the past code enforcements. Was there any other truth to that in regard to that matter besides the fact that he was operating illegally, like anything else in there, you know what I'm saying? That he wasn't, you know, besides that, that's the only thing that, you know, he was just doing incorrect per se?
In discussion with, in meeting with the code enforcement, there was a a complaint received by code enforcement in January of this year. It was my understanding, communicating with code enforcement, that they went out to respond to the complaint and found that there was no debris or operation of the facility at that time. So it was closed.
So Commissioner, there have been no other zoning violations that we know of other than the one I told you about where he was operating. So any other allegations in the email, we have no knowledge about that other than the one time that we did go out there and there were no violations.
Thank you, Robert.
Great, so just to confirm, there's no additional questions or concerns of either the applicant or Ron or Robert? Okay, so at this time, do we have a motion to adopt the findings of fact and Resolution PC 20-17 entitled "The Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Balden Park, adopting the findings of fact and approving a conditional use permit to allow for a recycling facility pursuant to Table 153.050.020 in the city's municipal code, location 4242 Park Place, applicant Wilmer Hernandez Gonzalez, case number CP 20-09."
Allow me to make that motion, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Does, do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Borquez. I would like to maybe table this. There's a little bit of an uneasiness regarding this resolution. I just would like to, but have some more questions before I decided on this item.
Mr. Chairman?
There a second?
Yes.
Yes, we have a motion on the floor and we need to figure out if there's a second before any other motion were made to table or anything of that nature.
Noted. So do we have a second from any of the commissioners? So seeing no motion, I guess if we want to entertain the motion, Commissioner Borquez's motion.
Well, wait a minute, there was a motion, but it dies for lack of a second.
Right. But I guess before we table, before we table, or before we even make the motion to table, I just kind of want to remind the commissioners just kind of about, like, a little bit of the history. And I know, I understand that we want to, we want to look into it more and I'm for it if that's what the Commissioner Borquez wants to do. He has my support. But I just want to remind the commissioners of kind of like the history of how we got here today. The applicants came forward about, I think I would say like three meetings. This is the third meeting that the applicant has come to. The first one, he asked for, to use a particular site. The commissioners at the time, and I don't remember who was sitting on the commission at the time, had concerns about, in response to some concerns that a developer, the developer from Palmeira had. So we had a traffic study and ultimately we didn't believe, the city, the planning commission didn't believe that this project was a good fit for that particular site. And so I'm guessing that this is a year, a year later, that the applicant found a new location and is proposing a new location. And so I just want, like, so this applicant has been, I mean, committed to his cause. So if that at all, in the next couple of weeks or whatever, while this motion is tabled, something to just consider, regardless of how you feel. Just keep in mind that the applicant is trying to find a suitable location. And so that's just some comments that I want to make.
Chairman, if I may, and also Mrs. City Attorney, as I indicated in the beginning, the applicant is present for any further questions. If it is that you needed any clarification, given that the applicant is present.
Sure, it's okay with the planning commission. I know that we didn't give an opportunity to the applicant to speak, but is it okay with the planning commission to open up the floor for three minutes for the applicant? Maybe to speak?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Robert.
The applicant would normally speak in favor during the public hearing portion of the hearing. So can you please do a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Sure, at this time, I make a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I will second that. This is Marlin Garcia.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Also, before I ask, before I ask our secretary to call Roll, I'm getting a message from Commissioner Garrido that he's having a hard time logging back on. He was disconnected. Is there any way that we can, Mark or David, is there any way that you can help us get him back on?
Okay, I'm going to let him in again.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, can I make a few comments about this?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do think it's important to remember that this applicant has been before the board multiple times now. And I completely understand if there's additional questions that need to be asked. But I would ask that we identify tonight what additional information is needed to make sure that if we're going to come, ask this applicant to come back, that all the questions are answered and everybody's ready to vote at the next meeting. Only because, as you know, in order for the applicant to move forward, whether it's approved or denied, you know, there has to be some decision by the planning commission. And then, you know, if it were to deny, then they can appeal. If it were to approve, then they can move forward with their project. But I just think it's very important, given that he's, the applicant's been before us multiple times, that we either make a decision tonight or we make sure that we know exactly what it is that we want to make sure that we can make a vote at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. City Attorney.
Thank you, Robert. So at this time, so is Chris back on? Were we able to get him back on?
Yes, he is.
Perfect. Okay, so at this time, Madam Secretary, will you please, will you please call Roll so that we can open up the public hearing?
Chair Christopher Sines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Edwin Borquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Edith Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Christopher Garrido? Commissioner Christopher Garrido?
I'm guessing that he's having connectivity issues. So so I guess we'll entertain the applicant. So I guess motion passes 4-0.
I need to call Commissioner Marlin Garcia.
Oh, I'm just sorry.
That's okay, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this point, the public hearing is open. I invite the applicant to speak three minutes.
Good evening, honorable planning commissioners and city staff. It is good to be before you once again as you consider our revamped proposal for applicant Mr. Wilmer Hernandez Gonzalez. As you all know, this has been more than a year in the making. We have really enjoyed working with your planning staff. Everyone there has been professional and very helpful, very much enjoyed the experience. After digesting the concerns raised last year by the members of the commission, we believe that we now have a proposal before you that not only has license to those concerns, but has taken all the necessary to ameliorate the potential of any problems moving forward. First and foremost, the proposal for the siting of the small recycling collection facility is now at a new location situated at 4242 Park Place. The location is very ideal as it takes this proposed activity further into your industrial zone, further away from the residential area by at least another 100 yards. It also comes further away from the D.O. Street, a high-transited street that was pointed out through the related traffic study. The traffic study also pointed out that Ramona has about a third of the trips as compared to Badeo. This new proposed site will be north of Ramona in an area that is typically traversed through people doing business in that particular area. I think that it's also important to note that the commission had concerns about noise in addition to the traffic. And we are very pleased to report that your study confirms that the new subject location is buffered industrial to the north, industrial to the east, and towing activity to the south and to the west. The proposed use would be the most minimis in soundness compared to the current activity surrounding this proposed small recycling facility, given that tow trucks are big and they're loud. There is industrial to the east with a mix of all sorts of vehicle and automotive-related activity. To the north, not only is there a train that runs through there, and sometimes those horns can get pretty loud, but just north of the railway, there is Urwando's industrial area, buildings that they are beyond the city limit and constructed of prefabbed concrete walls. They further lend to buffering from any residential that Urwando would have in proximity. I believe it is important to share also that the property owner is very well-known in writing of this business and jointly conducting business activity with the recycling facility. He is confident that it is very compatible and not a problem with the current tow operations. The property owner takes pride in running a tight ship in running the business that is very clean. You probably see that in the operations of the towing business that is situated there. We would like to commend the city in all its efforts in enhancing the quality of life for its residents as the city has always encouraged educating its residents, whether it be in living in healthier lifestyles and promoting healthy activities like recycling. It is healthy for the sustainability of our community and the small collection recycling facility further enhances residents' ability to help Mother Earth and it also helps putting a little bit of extra dollars into their pockets as we are facing a difficult time in our global history. Lastly, the applicant wants to get it right. Mr. Wilmer Hernandez was told last July, sorry. The applicant wants to get it right. He's gone through all the steps and is willing to go ahead and listen to any further concerns.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Chair Sines?
Yes.
Can you may I ask who the speaker is at the podium?
Yeah, so can you please state your name for the record?
Diana Partita. Thank you.
So thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and come back to the commissioners. Chris, are you back on?
He's on, but he has a microphone issue.
Oh, got it, got it. Okay, so commissioners, any additional questions of staff or applicant before we make a motion?
Chairman Sines?
Yes, Mr. Borquez.
Can I, can I address a question to, I think it was Ms. Partita?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you for that, for those words regarding the project at hand. What steps has the applicant taken to make this facility green and, you know, climate-conscious and going forward? You know, especially being that this is, you know, hazardous material and whatnot. If, you know, you can just enlighten me with, you know, if he's taking any steps in terms of, you know, green, you know, making the facility as clean and polished as possible.
Hello, yes. Thank you, Commissioner Borquez, for that question. So first and foremost, he on a daily basis will make sure that the facility is cleaned, whether it needs to be washed down, swept, picked up. Everything has a process and a routine. So every, the glass will be in its own bins, the aluminum and plastic will have their own sacks. And so these containers or these bins will be picked up on a daily basis to avoid any mess, to avoid any rodents, just making sure that everything is clean, making sure that everything is organized. The previous location, when we went before the board with the initial site location, we had also proposed the idea of getting greenery or plants around the facility to make it look more welcoming, to make it look more aesthetically looking. So the applicant is more than happy to construct any greenery available that is permitted by the landlord and by the city. So that was one of the ideas that the applicant did propose in the initial application, which he is more than happy to do so in this new site as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So at this time, do we have a motion to proceed? Do we have, Commissioner Borquez, if you wanted to continue to table, do you have any specific questions that need to be addressed? And?
Yeah, Chairman Sines, you know, I guess my concern was as far as, you know, the waste that, you know, I know that they try to keep it in tip-top shape and clean and all that, but what about the gases that do make it out into the air? You know, some of the material, there has to be some type of, you know, hazardous material or something that go, you know, from this type of recycling facility. So that's my concerns is, you know, how do they go about protecting, you know, all that stuff from getting in the air?
Can I answer the question, Commissioner Borquez?
Yeah.
So it's only recycling facility specifically for glass and plastic and aluminum. So there, it's my understanding that there's no hazardous gases being released.
So there, it's my understanding that there's no hazardous gases being released. Everything will be manually inputted into, for example, the glass will be manually inputted into plastic bins. The aluminum and the plastic will be put in, in, in sacks, in burlic sacks that will diminish any noise. So it's, it's these basic items that have no hazard effect on, you know, the surrounding areas or on Mother Earth or any.
And Commissioner Borkas?
Yes.
Yes, I would mention that in my review, th- this facility doesn't have any toxic materials. I, I would like the applicant to answer that expressly, whether or not this operation is going to be dealing with any toxic materials. And number two, this is not, this is, while it is a recycling facility, it is not a waste facility. And usually it's the waste that provides the gases and so forth that need to be handled in a landfill. In addition, it's my understanding, and I'd like Ron to address this, that the C U P does not allow any toxic materials or anything like that on the location. Is that correct, Ron?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. City Attorney. As, as mentioned, it's just a, a submittal of any glass bottles, aluminum and plastic bottles, just as you would submit for any other type of recycling facility that sometimes you find in front of a supermarket or a shopping center.
Thank you, Ron. And in terms of, you know, what it's doing to be green and so forth, it is a recycling facility. And so therefore, of course, it's there to help the environment and to, to mitigate the impacts of these materials on our environment. So in that sense, it's a green facility, but I don't believe there's any toxic materials. I think that's a very, very good question by Commissioner Borkas because in these facilities, sometimes there are toxic materials. But I don't think that is, I don't think that's a concern here.
Correct. Thank you, thank you, Attorney Tofoya. And again, Ms. Partita for, for, you know, speaking on this project. Attorney Tofoya, what is the, the process by which it, this comes in front of us and then the city council? How does that work, whether it's approved or denied?
Yes, Commissioner Borkas, if it's approved, somebody could appeal it to the city council. If it's denied, somebody could appeal it to the city council. So regardless of what decision is made today, it could be appealed.
Thank, thank you so much for that, for that response, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, I just wanted to just give you a little insight and background in my experience dealing with the similar type uses. It, it sounds to, it, it sounds like I'm getting from the commission that there is a little discomfort with respect to the operations and handling of material. And I think the city attorney addressed that issue. But in my experience dealing with these issues, if it is that the commission would like, the commission could place a condition on the, the conditional use permit to allow the applicant to operate and come back to the commission, where staff comes back to the commission and report back within three months to, to provide a, a status with respect to how they're operating. So essentially, it gives the opportunity to the applicant to operate and then allow staff to come back to the commission and report back. As you may know, with the conditional use permit, with all conditional use permits, if operators are not in compliance with the conditions of approval, that can move on to a revocation hearing. And so by adding a, a, a condition within the, the resolution to allow staff to come back in three months or four months, however the, the commission may feel comfortable with, to allow the applicant to operate, I just wanted to throw that out there, just based on my experience and dealing with these types of abuses.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Ron. Certainly an option for the, the commission to consider. I, I just kind of really am hesitant to like go that route only because starting a business has a high startup cost and, and, and giving, you know, giving them the, you know, three months and, you know, God forbid, down the line, we decide that that's not a, you know, like a route that we want to take. That's a lot of startup, startup for, for three months. So I, I think it's, I do think that it's like prudent for us to make a decision of whether we want to go ahead with it. If, if what I'm getting is that we're not feeling comfortable with it, then, then maybe this is something that, that we make a motion and, and let it be appealed to the city council. I, I just, like, I, I, only because this is the third time that the applicant is before us, I think that it's best to give an answer regardless of which way you guys are leaning. So. Uh, yes, go ahead.
And, and just lastly, I want to thank the commissioners for having us here before you again. And, you know, the applicant, he, he just wants to get it right. He's gone through all the steps and, you know, he's tried to make sure that he's met and listened to all the concerns and, you know, changing the location from the first initial site to now. It just seems like an, an ideal location just because it's more in the industrial area. It's zoned for that. It's a small recycling facility. It's not going to be this extravagant recycling facility. It's just going to be for the basics, which is the glass, the plastic and the aluminum. So the applicant just, you know, appreciates your time and, you know, he just wants to be able to provide the service for the community and, and answer any further questions to be able to meet the requirements needed for him to, to start opening up. He's been paying rent on the site that he has now ever since, just in case this got approved. So that also is taken, you know, to consideration where he wants to be, you know, a part of, of the Baldwin Park family.
Thank you, thank you very much, Diana. So at, at this time, I'm going to go back to, to our commission. So we can, I'll entertain a motion at this time so we can move forward one way or the other.
Chairman Sines, Commissioner Borkas, you know, my, I hate to pass the buck. You know, I, I really truly understand that he's been working diligently on this project and, and wanting to start data as soon as possible. But I think I, personally, I want to pass the buck and have the city count, have them appeal to the city council so that they could get a direct answer. So for this evening, in my uneasiness as a, as a resident of Baldwin Park, I'm going to motion to deny.
Commissioner Borkas, thank you very much. Do we have a second on Commissioner Borkas's motion? Just for the sake of getting a vote, one way or the other, I'm going to second this motion and I'm going to ask our Madam Secretary to call roll. And, uh, Robert, I, I guess in this situation, I don't see Commissioner Garrido on here or I don't know if he has access to his microphone. What does the vote count need to be, since it, it looks like there's four voting members at this?
Well, he, he's on the line, so he can vote. He should send an email.
Okay, so. So, Chris, if you can hear us, please send an email to Esther so, so we can get your vote on the record. But if not, at this time, Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Chair. Chair Christopher Sines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Edwin Borkas?
Yes.
Commissioner Edith Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Christopher Garrido?
I just received a chat message from Christopher Garrido saying yes.
Thank you. And Commissioner Marlon Garcia?
No.
Thank you.
So at this time, the motion to deny for, for one, Mr. Ron Garcia?
Miss, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Does that motion also include the adoption of the findings of fact to deny?
Yes, that would include, and I, I, do we need another, another motion and roll call to include it?
I, I would prefer that you make a new motion saying, you know, adopting the findings of fact for denial along with denying the RISO and other matters.
Sure, so at this, at this time, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to deny the findings of fact and deny the resolution. And I'll entertain a motion, or I'll entertain a second.
Mr. Chairman, we're not denying the findings of fact. We are adopting the findings of fact for the denial.
Noted, so at this time, we are adopting, adopting the findings of fact in denial of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Noted, thank you, Commissioner Borkas. And, uh, Madam Secretary, at this time, will you please call roll again?
Yes. Chair Christopher Sines?
Uh, yes.
Vice Chair Edwin Borkas?
Yes.
Commissioner Edith Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Christopher Garrido?
I see a yes on the chat board.
And Commissioner Marlon Garcia?
No.
Thank you.
So at this time, the findings of fact were adopted for the denial of the resolution for one. Again, like I, I mentioned before, I just kind of want to reiterate that, that I, I think that this is a great service that's being provided. And, but I, I think ultimately, it's the city council that has to make the decision whether this is a good fit for the community. And I, I, I don't know if somebody on the planning staff can give direction to the applicant of how to proceed.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I, um, at this point, I, I will be in communication with the applicant to instruct them on, on what their options are with respect to appealing to the city council, whether that's a decision they want to make or not.
Noted, thank you, thank you very much, Ron. So at this time, I'm going to move on to, to public comments. So Madam Secretary, have, since, since the beginning of the meeting, have we received any public comments?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Only on the item, I think it was item number one regarding the cell tower opposition of the power.
Thank you, was that, was that the one that you had previously read or is this in addition to that?
That's the one you read. However, did receive one after the, um, I'm in heaven.
Yeah, I, I guess, Robert, for the sake of having it read into the record, should we have Esther read it?
I would prefer that, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you. So Esther, would you mind reading that, the comment that we received?
Okay, the comment that you received from Dina Elzik, E L Z I K, and it reads as follows, I vote against erecting the Palm Cell phone on one, three, four, six, same avenue.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And that, that concludes all public, public comments, is that correct?
We received one after it had been closed. It's from the same person. Yeah, and it says, I vote no on erecting tower.
Okay, well, and that's from the same, same person.
Same person.
Noted.
Those are the only written comments.
Noted, thank you, thank you very much, Esther. So at this time, I'm going to move on to reports of officers. Ron, do you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I just want to let the commission know that it looks like we will not be having a planning commission, which is August twelfth, that would be the next planning commission meeting. But we are planning to have a planning commission on the second meeting in August, which is August twenty-sixth. We have a couple items that we need to present before you. And also would like to thank the commissioners and staff for today's joint study session on the downtown specific plan update. Staff and the consultant, they're really getting, really excited about embarking on updating the downtown specific plan. As the consultant mentioned, I really encourage you to think about bringing friends and family that live within Baldwin Park to participate in those community meetings that we'll have set in October. They're going to be really exciting. And I know that with COVID right now, we're still trying to figure out and strategize how we're going to hold some community, community meetings, given the COVID situation. But staff will, will inform you of how those meetings will, will be conducted. But more than anything, just wanted to share with staff, I mean, share with the commission and staff that we thank you and look forward to working on the downtown specific plan update.
Thank you very much, Ron. So I just, I guess we're going to move on to commission comments. I, I just want to add a couple of things. Number one, I, I want to thank you once again for securing that grant funding that made this process possible. Second, I, I, I don't know if he's on, on the Zoom chat, but I do want to welcome the new planning intern, Andrew Vidal, and, and give him kind of a warm welcome on behalf of the planning commission and wish him the best, best of luck. And lastly, just like the mayor had previously passed off his condolences, I, I do want to pass off the condolences on behalf of the planning mission to our city attorney and his, for the passing of his mother-in-law. So on behalf of the planning mission, we are extremely sorry for your loss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Robert. And so at this time, is there any additional communications from, any communications or anything that the commission needs, would like to add? Seeing none, I now make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Yes. Come, Chair Sines, Christopher Sines? Vice Chair Edwin Borkas?
Yes.
Commissioner Edith Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Christopher Garrido?
I see a yes on the chat board.
Thank you. Commissioner Marlon Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned at eight thirty-six, viva Baldwin Park.
Viva Baldwin Park.
Yeah.
Have a good night.